Yeah.
All right. Welcome, everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
All right, any discussion on tonight's agenda? All in favor? Hi, any opposed? All right, motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular board meeting minutes from the February 1st meeting.
Were you about to say September?
Yeah, I almost did. Not that.
No.
Sorry? No way.
All right, we, any discussion on the February 1st regular board meetings minutes? Or, yeah, right? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi, any opposed? All right, motion carried. It's your turn.
Okay, so very long report, bear with you guys. Our winter sports seasons are halfway through. Our girls varsity and boys varsity best sports teams are both three and one. The girls play tomorrow night in New York and the boys start downstairs in approximately 25 minutes. Again, sure. Our hockey team has senior night tomorrow. It's nice that everything's live streams because their home, like, ice rink is bogus. It's, so, and then same with wrestling, they have a home meet tomorrow, but their home is Ammon because they're mine. Our winter one sectionals were the week before breaks, so it was swimming and skiing. Our school team got six out of 11 after being 10 out of 11 last year at sectionals. And everyone that went to sectionals placed, we had everything. Two second place, one third place, two fifth place, one eighth, one ninth, one tenth, one eleventh, two thirteenth, and a fourteenth. And our competitors at sectionals were Nicky Catherine Stanley, Addie Abel, Shelby Baker, Reese Kleinhead, Eden Palazzo, and Ammon Way. The fall two sports season start parts first, so that's volleyball, football. And then at the boys varsity game on Saturday afternoon, Adam Wright got his career 1,000 points on his varsity field goal. So, that's it for sports. That's it. Um, the Ice Cup Interschool Athletic Competition in English came back to Geneseo. In the literary category, Emily Sullivan got first, Cindy Matthews got second, and Addie Abel got fifth. In creative writing, Jacob French got first, Finn Robertson got fifth, and Xander Chulley got sixth. In the drama category, Barry Chandler got first, Joey DeBel got second, and Lil Sheen got third. And then the double team of Addie, Barry, and Xander got fourth overall. The blue team, Sidney Millen Finn, got second overall. And the white team of Emily, Joey, and Jacob got first in this overall Ice Cup. It's not on file since we've lost, so proud of them. Ms. Adams' therapy dog Penny had her first day in the art room today. Ms. Adams says it was a great first day and she had a great time meeting new friends. And her pictures of her first day are on the art social media pages if anyone wants to see them. And she is looking forward to bringing lots of smiles to all in the coming months. And then for my show report, as of last Wednesday, the show is done. We're ready. Except, our performances, I'm just not going to talk about them.
Yeah, I know.
March something in the end. Yeah.
Hang in there. We're still going to see it.
Yeah, it'll happen, just, we don't know where, we don't know how, but it'll happen. Any questions?
Good job, well done.
Thank you, indeed.
I don't think so. Maybe? Andreas?
I know Mr. A gave me something to share, but I cannot see Andreas here.
Okay.
I know that I could report that the academic talent pool team from the middle school has a meet tomorrow. Because my sister is only been talking about it the past week.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Regina.
And now I'm going to do rehearsal.
Good luck.
Good. Oh, watch out.
Except you're not, because you're.
Except I'm not.
Well, we'd like you to say, so, we understand.
You want to fight with Mrs. DeBel?
No, no, I'll let her have you. No, 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 Bettina. Go ahead and run. Okay, you said there was something to share or no?
There may be one second to get us started off. We have one of our student artists winning an award.
Okay. Awesome.
Actually, before I do this, um, Mr. A, would you like to introduce this next section? So I think this is one of your proud days.
Yes, that would be great. I actually have the winning artist, she is zooming in with us right now. Our winning artist is Katie Pearson. So I'll give you, I'll give her a short intro and then she actually wants to say something, if that's okay with everybody.
Absolutely.
Great.
So, earlier this year, we had, as art teachers, opportunities to enter just two pieces in this art show that is the entire Finger Lakes area. And I, usually I choose one middle school and one high school student, and my middle school student I chose this year was Katie Pearson. You already know the end of the story. Now Katie's going to take us through it a little bit, she has something prepared. So, and then at the end, Mr. Holt, if you would like to show the image or the video, that would be great at the very end. So, thank you, everybody, for, for doing, listening to us, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Whoops, unmute, unmute Katie, unmute. There you go.
There you go.
Yay.
So, um, I won an award for my flute art piece at RIT. And then, so, um, originally, we were doing a project in art which involved a lot of shading. And we started out with this, I don't know if everyone can see it, but we had to shade different, um, like, lightness and darknesses on this paper to get us ready to do our instrument shading project. So, um, there were different levels. I think one of the easiest was a two and one of the hardest was an eight. And I chose an eight, which was a flute, and I chose the flute because my mom actually played the flute in high school and I wanted to do the flute drawing for her so she could have a little piece of the flute with her. And so we were given the option between a bunch of different pictures of the instrument from either online or that Mr. Antonucci took, and he printed them out. And we had the option of either tracing it or using it as a reference, and I did a bit of both. So I started by tracing the outline of the flute, so I had a base to get started with. And then, um, I started to kind of go on my own. And throughout it, I had a little bit of, I had some struggles, and so I asked Mr. A for some help. And he gave me a tip and said to treat it like a steak, which I got very confused about. And then he showed, um, what he meant. And so he took pieces of paper that were around this size and he covered my drawing with them and only let me see a section of the drawing and told me to work on that piece. And then I could move the papers around when I was ready for the next piece. And so I would slowly move the paper around until I was done. The project took a while because I only had two in-person days a week, but I finally got it done and I was very happy. Mr. A was very happy with it and he really, really liked it, which I was really happy with and made me smile. And I didn't think anything of it, I just thought I was done with an art piece. And then later, Mr. A, uh, I walked into Mr. A's classroom one day to say hi and he told me that I could possibly be entered, and I was going to be entered if I wanted to, into an art show. And I didn't know that I could win an award until later. And he told me that I could win an award and I was very excited. And then, uh, later, my mom walks into my room and says, Katie, I have a call for you. And I was very confused and she wouldn't let me see the phone number until after. And then she took her hand off and it said, Mr. Antonucci. And I was very confused as to why he would be calling me at 6 o'clock at night. And I saw, uh, and then he started talking and he said.
Maybe I was ordering a steak.
He said that I won an award for my art and I was very excited. And he said I was one in a dozen or a little bit more, maybe 15 students. And I was the only seventh grade winner, which I was very excited about. And I don't think there were any sixth graders or maybe only one or two. Then there was one eighth grader. And so I was very excited that I won. And then during lunch, I got a text message from my mom and it said that there is a video that I emailed you. And I watched the video with my friend and the person who I was sitting with, and she had no idea. And she was excited for me too, and everyone was just very excited. And, uh, we called my grandma and we called a lot of people and I was just very, yeah. So this is the flute.
Oh.
Wow.
Can't see it.
Nice.
Congratulations.
Well done, Katie. That's awesome. Good job. Oh, wow.
Oh, beautiful.
And there's also a video clip of her getting the awards. Give me one second to set up.
We're very proud of you, Katie, and I think your mom will be happy having that on her wall.
Thank you.
So, the first award, the Art Education for 2D Work, goes to Katie P. for flute. This beautiful graphite drawing on paper. Teacher is Rob Antonucci.
Nice.
Nice.
Very good, Katie. Congratulations, keep up the good work, keep drawing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now we have to have a real meeting? Okay.
There was a lot of good news from our students.
I know, those are the best parts, and we have to go into the other part, okay. Okay, and we didn't have anything else, right? That was for the middle school part, that kind of took care of middle school? Okay. All right, and we don't have presentations or updates from the admin this meeting, which brings us to Cindy.
Yeah, before I get started my report, I just wanted to welcome Phyllis Wickerman. She is from Senator Gallivan's office. And many of you know that Senator Gallivan has been a great advocate for our school and many of the public schools in his region. He, as always, we can't meet in person, but we've been having Zoom calls, we've been having meetings virtually so that he can hear from the superintendent's exactly what the concerns are and how he can help advocating for us. So I don't know, Phyllis, did you want to say anything today? Just?
Like always, thank you for letting me come down and visit you once a year. I was invited to do it Zoom, but I like the in-person stuff, so that's why I threw it. But thank you, like Cindy said, Senator Gallivan really needs to know what you guys are dealing with. What are your concerns, what are your fears? He has always swung the bat really hard for school districts. And hopefully this year, we give back some of those cuts that, that, that governor is proposing. I know that one of the very biggest concern is the consolidation of the age. And that is something that they, the, uh, the conference from Western New York, the senators and the assembly people in the Western New York area are working as a team to make sure one budget negotiations are, are talked about. The districts in, and not only school districts, but even towns and villages are having some issues with those suggestions and it could really do a lot of damage. So he does fight for that. I do, Cindy has a couple of things that she's going to tell you about that we are aware of, but we are always looking for those stories personal so that when the senator hears, Geneseo is experiencing this, listening to Regina and the play, things like that, we need to know about. So when he's sitting on that floor and talking to his colleagues, he can tell them, this is what's happening, this is what I'm hearing, this is. So we always appreciate that and our doors always open. And David knows when to call and talk, you know, tell me what's going on. And you are all very welcome to do that anytime. So I appreciate, thank you for letting me sit in and listen.
Absolutely, and again, thank you.
Thank you, the senator, who is, as I said, has always been a strong advocate for, for our region and all the public school districts. And that's a good lead into, this week is Celebrate Public Schools Week. So we will be celebrating all the great things that we do here at Geneseo this week. We welcome back our sixth grade students to four-day-a-week in-person instruction. So we are now up to K5, or excuse me, K6 students in our building, four days a week. It's great to see more students in the building. I was chatting with a few of the board members before the meeting and I stopped up into a couple of sixth grades' classrooms. And it's unusual when you ask the students if they're happy to be back in school four days a week and have the entire class jump out of their chairs and put their hands in the air and say, yes, they were. So they're, they're happy to be back, we are even more happy that they are here. And so, looking forward to continuing phasing in more of our students. We hope to have some of the eighth grade back in person as well. It does get tricky, and I'll talk on my next slide, why, when we start looking at ninth and through 12th grade with the high school students, we really need help with our social distancing and the transportation piece. Those are two major barriers that we're struggling with. So, the in-person learning guidance, if it sounds like it's confusing and you're hearing mixed messages, you are. Last week, in the Syracuse Standard Post paper, Onadaga County was said they were considering reducing their six-foot distancing to three feet. And that they were told that this was a local health department decision. And so that if they wanted to do that, they could move forward. So today, a local superintendent took that news article and sent it to the New York State Department of Health and said, is this the case? Because we would like to move forward in Livingston County, doing the same thing. And they said, absolutely not, our guidance has not changed. We must continue to have six feet social distancing or a barrier, and that has not changed at this time. So unfortunately, lots of different messages, but the guidance, the actual guidance from the Department of Health and the governor has not changed. We continue to advocate. The Livingston County superintendent continues to meet with Livingston County Department of Health every Tuesday and Thursdays. We bring this up as well as what I'm going to talk about in the next slide is really the performing arts advocacy. So we know and we're happy that our high-risk sports were approved and we're allowed to have spectators. And so we are advocating for the same restrictions or at least the same benefits for our performing arts. Can we have two spectators for our audience in the play for all of our people? Or, you know, we, really Bettina spent some time with the entire auditorium layout and she has designed a seating chart that would allow 111 people. Everybody is six feet apart, sitting in groups of two. And obviously, there's one additional, that's 111. And, but there's six feet around all the people. And we shared that with Livingston County Department of Health, they advocated with New York State Department of Health, and we were told no. So, as I said, Senator Gallivan is always a great advocate, and I do have a letter from myself just asking for help in this area. Hopefully we will see some relief and can have an audience for our amazing plays.
Well, and just so you know, the senator has been asked by several different constituent groups to write letters. He is more than happy to get on board with something that he believes is unnecessary. So, we will pass this on to him tomorrow and I'm sure we'll have something by the end of, at least next week.
Thank you. We'll also be sending a letter to Assemblywoman Burns. So we have made great progress with our COVID-19 vaccinations. Tomorrow, we have 50-plus slots through Livingston County where our staff, and this is our entire staff, bus drivers, teachers, teacher aides, cafeteria, anybody who has wanted to get a COVID-19 vaccination has had a slot available. This will just about complete our vaccinations. We did get a couple of late people who wanted to register, so we need to see if we can get on another day. But we'll have most of our staff, I'm saying 86, 87% have received vaccination. Tomorrow will be their first vaccination. They will have their second shot on February, or March 24. And we do have concerns, because we have heard about the reactions with the vaccination with your second dose. So we are looking into alternatives and options on what we can do for the students on the 25th. So we are, we're still working out the details of that plan, but just know that we are aware that there is concern about the staff members having a reaction to, to the second COVID-19 vaccination. I just really wanted to publicly thank Livingston County Department of Health for making this a priority. As soon as they started to receive COVID-19 vaccinations and educators were included in that piece, they immediately scheduled Wednesdays as a vaccination site for schools. And they have made it a mission to really help us vaccinate our staff so we can stay open for in-person instruction.
So for that March 24th date, well, they get vaccinated the 24th, so we're talking about the 25th.
The 25th, we're looking at options.
That'd be a Thursday?
Yes, yes.
So we'd have to decide whether we might go a little more to close or.
Correct, yes.
Can we even have a snow day?
So, yeah, so the options would be that you could have.
We have snow days, don't we?
An emergency planned day, or a planned emergency day. Working out the details with a school tournament, that's, you know, even a possibility, but a scheduled emergency day. So we're looking at that, which would mean that the school is closed, there'd be no instruction. There is also the opportunity to have asynchronous day where the teachers would have a few lessons in there who will classroom that the students would have to complete on that day. And then that would be considered a day that we could count towards our 180 days of instruction. So just working out the details.
It is March, we could actually have a snow day.
We could, we could have a snow day.
We, we could actually legitimately have a snow day.
At times, March has been the trickier.
It's true.
Months with the weather. So just know that we are taking that in consideration and.
I would highly recommend not pushing. I, it knocks you, a lot of people, most people I know, including myself, need that day to not do anything. It's not fun.
And then with the building project, our next steps are that we are starting our user group meetings. So this week, we'll have a meeting with Fine Arts and STEAM on Wednesday, and then Athletics is on Thursday. Really, these meetings are to gather feedback from any community member, faculty member who wants to provide their input in the different aspects of the building project.
Is that the same, those the same groups that were meeting way long ago or no?
So, we sent out a Google form and asked, or a form, and said, if you would like to participate, sign this form and come back. Did you send it to everyone on the Building Plan Task Force? And the Building Plan Task Force did receive that as well.
Okay, okay, so they can pick up or not, okay.
Absolutely.
And it's Zoom, I take it?
It is Zoom.
Okay.
And then, before I get to questions, so we have been talking about our state aid. And so for the 2021 school year, we have been notified that the 20% cut that we originally had heard about is, is, is off the table. It's not going to happen. We have received our full allotment of our state aid and we did receive the payments that were withheld this summer. So we have been made whole for the 2021. We still are unsure of what the 21, 22 state aid runs really consists of for two reasons. One is, as Phyllis said, they have taken the expense-driven aids and once again lumped them into one category and then they would just give you a fixed amount every year. And that's, that's concerning because obviously, expense-driven aids, you receive more aid on the more expenses that you incur. So you want to make sure that if we have to spend more money on transportation or BOCs aid, that we are able to get our reimbursement and our, just blank on the word, as far as our state aid rate. So we are, we are talking about that. The other piece is the fact that Governor Cuomo has included the STAR rebate as a state aid revenue. It's not, so we're not sure how we factor that in. So, with that, on top of the fact that we knew we had debt falling off, we are looking at a negative tax cap. And so one of the things that we may have to consider is proposing a tax cap at a supermajority. We have to go out with a percentage above our tax cap and ask our community to approve our budget at a supermajority. And so that is something that we are considering at this point. And Mr. Tenali will give some more details about that when he does the report from our finance audit committee. That is where we stand right now. Are there any questions?
Sounds like fun. It's always fun, good times.
It's interesting, it's interesting.
Okay, John, hold, where are we with, what are your relations?
Uh, one second. Allison Chandler, Allison, if you want to unmute your mic when you're ready?
Great, thanks, John. I just, I wanted to just speak for a moment as a parent and a teacher at Geneseo about the play and, you know, what we've been told about not having any audience there. And I, I wanted to say first off that I really appreciate that Cindy has really taken a really appropriate stance on this and tried to rally the troops and really making a good effort to get some parents and other community members to come to the shows. I think it's important for Senator Gallivan and other elected officials and people at state to understand that although the group of people who participate is possibly smaller than the people who participate in athletics for some of these students, this is their thing, it's their shining moment to like scoring 1,000 points for Adam Wright, which, congratulations, Adam, but for being out on that stage and really showing off their hard work and dedication over the last year or five years or 10 years of their lives, it really means a lot. Senior Night for sports means your parents and your family get to celebrate you and all of the hard work that you've put in, in a lifetime of dedication to something that you love. And the idea of parents not being able to share the last show that a person who's been on that stage at GCS since the time they were kindergartners, you know, that's unacceptable. They are all extracurricular activities. Sports are extracurricular and drama is extracurricular and all fine arts are extracurricular. And there's no reason why the state should not recognize this. I understand that the people who I'm speaking to, I'm preaching to the choir, so to speak, because I know you get that, but we need our officials and our state to realize that too. I have a senior and two freshmen who are working on this show and they are putting in hours and hours and hours as are every student and adult who's working on it. And the idea that there would be no in-person audience is unacceptable. When I can go to my son's hockey games, to basketball games, to a wrestling match, it, it makes no sense whatsoever. And somewhat, how someone at the state needs to start recognizing that. I'm hopeful that with restrictions that are seeming to be a little bit loosened up, this will happen as well. But, you know, I think it's really important that we don't, we don't back down on this and that we take it to every level that we can. And I would be saying this, if my daughter wasn't a senior, I would be saying it because I teach kids who I know this is their everything. And, and I think it's important for us to recognize that they need this just as much as the seniors on that basketball court needed it. So I, I hope we continue to pursue in any way possible, allowing there to be at least a small audience at the shows. Thank you.
Absolutely, Allison, we, we agree completely. And like I said, we'll continue to advocate and do what we can. One of the things that does seem to be happening is that as high-risk sports were approved, it is certainly getting more attention that the performing arts has been left behind in this process. So it does seem like more and more people are advocating and I, I'm hopeful that they are listening to, to that message.
And it has come up and is very well, very supported by everybody on the board. So we are going to do everything in our power, we're signing our names to letters and, um, I'd even be willing to write something to LCN, publish something about this topic because it is becoming a bit ridiculous. Yeah, it's, yeah, enough, you know, we have to be safe and we are being safe, but it really makes no sense that we can have adults sitting in a, in a gymnasium underneath our auditorium and we can't have them in the auditorium, it's ridiculous. So I'm all for being as safe and following the regulations as we can to keep people safe, but that doesn't, it's not, it doesn't equate, it doesn't equal. So I agree with you, Allison, and perhaps I will break that up and try to get that to, uh, our friend over at the LCN or whoever.
We're all in agreement.
Yep, absolutely. Was that it?
That was it.
Okay. And, uh, let's see, that brings us to committee reports. Mike, you guys had a meeting today?
Yeah, we met tonight. So, I guess you all know, we're, we're in full cycle now for the 21, 22 budget season. And we, in the last, last meeting and this meeting, we, we have been looking at different options. Ken and Cindy making various recommendations, proposals in terms of what we can potentially see in terms of our budget. At this point, we're still trying to evaluate all of the revenue, all of the state aid, all of the, you know, the cost structures and everything else. So we, we did talk through a number of options. all of the revenue, all of the state aid, all of the, you know, the cost structures and everything else. So we we did talk through a number of options. Cindy alluded that one of the the most likely candidates, and this is a bit of an anom- anomaly this year in the sense of what we're, what to expect. Uh even if we, the good news is, you know, even if we go out at one percent, it's it's below the two percent. You know, which is kind of the, at least the psychological number that people think about. We expect to stay below that uh in in, but it still may require us to go out and propose a budget with a supermajority, both on this board as well as in the public. And uh in in order to to kind of evaluate what we need to do from a fund balance, from a reserves and in future outlook. So those are the the things we're continuing to look through. We don't have all of the facts yet. We're still looking through the options. Ken has a a number of areas that he continues to evaluate and and we'll circle back with the finance committee and then to the whole board uh over the next couple of weeks and and we'll see where it leads in the next, by the next meeting. So um you know, one percent isn't bad, uh but still, that's something that we we still have some some things to evaluate before we can put a final number out there. More to follow. And uh those are the the main topics, tax cap and the budget process.
Great, thanks. Everybody else good on the finance committee? Anything? Um that's really about it because the community engagement strategies, again, sort of stuck until we can actually engage the community. Uh obviously, we're engaging the community with our task force building. That that's being done. Um but that's sort of separate and apart from what we usually do with the community engagement strategies, which which is nice to get back to and perhaps by the end of the year we can, but for right now, we really can't have people in the building doing fun and interesting things. So we'll do what we can. Um GCF, again, they still meet um when necessary via Zoom. And again, I just want to reiterate that they are a great resource for teachers to reach out to if they would like any financial support on any extracurricular things they might do in way in uh terms of field trips, virtual field trips, things like that, that they can bring into the school uh for their students. GCF is a great resource and they are looking forward to having all those proposals brought to them. Policy Committee, we're in the works to have a meeting, I believe. Yep, March second. So we'll finally have that get going um where we can start working on our policy handbook. Start uh breaking that out and getting the things out that need to get out and cleaning it up. So um that's a project that I'm looking forward to starting. If there's anything else for the good of the order, anybody? Okay, personnel, David.
Okay, uh under personnel, we the numbers have changed slightly because of the the board docs, way we're doing things. So that item eight point zero one just signifies it's the personnel section. So I will uh make a motion that uh uh to move that we approve items eight point zero two through eight point zero six.
Any discussion on any of those items for tonight? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Um section nine point zero one is the new business section. Uh I'd like to make a motion that we approve items nine point zero two through nine point zero seven.
Any discussion? I just have one small minute thing. I was reading over the instructional support staff contract and I did find um a word that was left out. So I will just hand that to you. It's my news, but it says, it would be nice to fix that word in the contract. Um doesn't make any difference to the contract. It's just a very small insignificant word, but it should be added. Um and I would, I guess that's it. This one. Anybody have anything else?
I just wanted to draw attention to nine point oh six, which is the amended instructional calendar. When we opened up in August, we moved our superintendent conference day that we had originally planned throughout the school year to be at the beginning of the school year so that we could make sure that we have our safety protocols in place and that we are ready to welcome our students safely. We did have one additional because we have four conference days a year. We had one that we hadn't planned. So as I mentioned earlier, we are planning that superintendent's conference day to be on March twenty-fourth. Again, that is the day when we have multiple people getting their their second vaccination. So the amended instructional calendar for today is to just identify that March twenty-fourth is a superintendent's conference day. And again, March twenty-fifth, we're looking to do um something to make sure that we don't have students here and no teachers. That would be a bad idea.
Yeah, that wouldn't work very well.
They might have fun. Any questions about the instructional calendar changes?
Sounds good. Um anything else for anybody? I did read over the uh fun activity, extra classroom activity funds auditor findings and I appreciate the response to anything we had to fix from the business office. So it looked pretty good. Um anybody, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carried.
Okay, uh section ten point zero one is the business office items. Um I'd like to make a motion, we approve items ten point zero two through ten point zero four.
I'm moving my last comment to this section about the audit finding. Very, I was pleased with that. So what the hell was here? All right, anybody have anything for this section? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carried. And we're going into executive session for a
I'd like to make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss a particular personnel item and to discuss some current litigation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carried. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Phyllis.
Thank you.